Miele, City Commissioner.
Daphne West, City Commissioner, Commission President.
Frida Beal, CHP. Penny Char- Penny Charman. CCHS Board.
Patty Brown, CHP. George Cohen with Clackamas Heritage Partners.
Jackson Lewis, also with Clackamas Heritage Partners.
Dan Fowler, current Chair of Clackamas Heritage Partners.
David Porter, Executive Director from Clackamas Heritage Partners.
Jack Hammond, Clackamas Heritage Partners.
Lowell Miles, Board of the Clackamas Heritage Partners.
Rocky Smith, Oregon City Commission.
Marilyn Morrissey, Clackamas Heritage Partners.
Thank you very much. Let's go around the room to, probably won't be able to hear because you don't have mics, so speak up.
Nanita Cracher, Oregon City Public Works.
Dan Brettlock, Community Development.
David Weber, Fire and Air Service.
Terry Bankhead, Assistant for the City Manager.
Quickly.
Carolyn Corzal, Museum of Oregon Territory.
Arnie Dreyer, Museum of Oregon Territory.
Colin Meyer, the Oregon.
Elmehagen Miller, Slow Hoors.
Sandy Carter, Willamette Falls Heritage Commission.
Ingrid Wittes, Museum of the Oregon Territory.
William Pecker.
Raul Harding, the Mon- the Monfortum Memorial Society.
Marge Harding, Irma Tinger House.
Paul Edgar, Kenema Newquahood.
Chip Simmons, Holosuite Pet Center.
Matt Graham, Oregon City News.
Betty Mum, McLaughlin. Barkley Hills, who is this?
Brand new.
Brand new. Karen Moragall, Museum of Oregon Territory.
Great, thank you all for coming. This is a long awaited meeting that we're having. We have received a report that was commissioned by the City Commission because of the funding difficulties that Clackamas Heritage Partners began to have and continue. So it was, we believed at the city level that by commissioning a report that we would all have the same baseline understanding of the situation and then could go and seek remedies following that. So in the spirit of that, I'll turn that over to you, Larry, City Manager.
Just quickly, I'm going to turn this over to our consultants to walk you through this report and where they are and where to look and focus. I think for kind of helping you look at this or start from the executive section, and they're going to walk through this, probably take about 30 minutes, really give you a good overview of this. It might be best to kind of get the full playbook of the report, and then we can turn it over to question and answers and walk through that, or if there's something that you need to have clarified as we chat about that, feel free to ask those questions and we'll know about that in the remainder of the report.
And I think you meant executive summary rather than executive session.
Exactly. Yeah, here's the executive summary, but we will not do an executive session.
Thank you.
Turn that over to.
Well, thank you, Mayor Norris and City Commissioners for having us here tonight. Before Nannita gets in and talks about the details of the report, I just wanted to acknowledge everyone in this room who participated in this study. As you know, a study that is this comprehensive on this short of a timeframe, it takes an enormous amount of commitment from everyone, and we were very pleased to, first of all, meet many of you through this process and also to have you be as helpful as you were and the contributions that you made as well, too. And all of that really helped us then do a good job, I think, in terms of really pulling this together. And what we hope will come out of this report will be something that's very useful to everyone as you all really take a look at what some solutions may be for that. Nannita did the bulk of the report. This is Nannita McLeodhat. Nannita is one of our consulting managers. Talked with many of you and pulled together the report. So Nannita is going to actually go through the report, really kind of following what's in the executive summary and then working through some of the rest of the major parts of the report. We also want to just make a couple of statements here. First of all, this was an operational and financial assessment that we did, so we focused in those areas. There were probably a lot of other areas that we could have focused in beyond that, but really the project was directed around really doing a very good financial and operational assessment, so that's where we focused. The other thing was, and we just want to say this for the record, while this was a financial assessment, the information that we used was information that was furnished to us, financial information. We did not want it that information, and we're not making any representations about the accuracy of that information. However, that said, we have pulled together information that was produced by each of the different groups, and we'll go through that as well. So with that, I think I'll stop and just have Nannita watch you through it and tell us what you're going to talk about.
Okay. Thank you, and I think I'd like just to repeat Jeff's acknowledgement of the cooperation and support. Everyone was very available and with good spirit and open dialogue, so I just want to thank everyone again that made time for me. I appreciate it. I'm following the executive summary. It's my basic outline to my remarks, which can be found on page one of the report. And I'll start first with the financial analysis. The financial analysis is based on the fiscal years 2006, '07, and '08. Those were used because consistent and complete information was available. The first full year of operations for CHP was the middle of 2005, so that's only a partial year, and then 2009 is not complete, and it's different because of the shutdown and reopening of operations. So for a consistent baseline, we used the three years of comparable analysis. As you can see, the net income, I'm going to move, we did an overall assessment of the financials tying back to the financials of the org- of CHP that you see summarized for the earned income, contributed income for a total, the cost of sales, and then net income of the organization overall. It fluctuates dramatically from year to year because there are significant infusions of cash from land sales or significant gifts, and in turn, that cash has been used for significant activities such as debt payment following the taking over the operations of the Museum of Oregon Territory. So in order to adequate, to appropriately assess the fiscal baseline operations for CHP, I, moving into the middle of the page, looking at the second block of financial information, I started from the net income from operations, and that would be the activities of what each of the facilities provides. So the interpretive exhibits and work at the End of the Oregon Trail. Museum of Oregon Territories has the Tom Water Room as well as the ticket sales for missions that are included in that, and then there's the Stevens Crawford House. There's tickets that are sold there, and they do some additional activities around sales and that kind of thing. So those are all the operating or the earned income sources for the museums. And you can see that over, the net from all of those activities is a negative, it's a negative net income, which is, has been described as, well, not a surprise to anyone that I talked with because it's a general assumption that heritage associations operate at a deficit and require contributed income of some kind, you know, individuals, corporations, or government, or earned income from other sources other than their direct heritage operations. So that, you know, I guess so what you could say is that these three facilities are not an exception to that underlying principle of heritage operations.
If I might, I just have a little point of confusion on the table.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Income I think normally is income coming in, the activities which you described, and you've indicated there's a negative income.
Right.
But that, does that in some way still reflect ticket sales and all those things?
Right.
What, they are the actual income, but you're indicating there.
So the ticket sales and then net of the direct operating costs for the facilities would result in a negative. So they don't, they're not self-funding.
Okay.
The expense of operating the three facilities exceeds the income they generate from the different activities. And detail on that can be found in the financial analysis and the financial assessment sections of the report. Thank you. The fundraising expense, sorry, the Willamette Falls personnel expenses and then added back to that baseline, the Executive Director of Clackamas Heritage Partners has put in significant time into that initiative, and as is outlined, there's a number of activities in managing the organization that would need to be done. So if his time was released from a major project such as Willamette Falls Access, there's a lot of other work to be done, so there wouldn't be his savings. You couldn't just cut his job, right? There's other work to go do. So that expense should be carried forward for an analytical baseline. The fundraising expenses would need to be going forward because, as highlighted by the operating results, you need to have some kind of development of contributed income, so going forward, the fundraising expenses would continue. And the basic general and administrative expense excluding depreciation and the debt payment would also need to continue. So adding those things together, the net, the net amount to be funded for CHP as it currently operates, they need contributed or income from other sources ranging from $260,000 to $376,000 a year over this three-year period. Okay? So that creates the basic, what's left over to be funded. So that's the number, and I, that's how I backed into it. So moving forward, because this fluctuated, and then now I'll be moving into projection scenarios for different alternatives, I chose as a baseline $350,000 net to be funded, and I picked the higher end because there's been, wages have increased, you know, utilities cost more, there's just been expenses have gradually increased on several fronts, and I didn't find opportunities to significantly reduce that. So I think it's a more reasonable representation, the high end is a more reasonable representation to look at for forward-looking projections of what the cost of operating the three facilities would actually be. Going forward to look at different scenarios, I developed scenarios primarily around the capacity of the End of the Oregon Trail interpre- performance ex- the. The theater, thank you, the theater, which will seat 90 people, and looking at the, currently, the average attendance going through the facilities, they've been selling about 30,000 tickets a year, and I want you to hold in your mind as a baseline that that's about the population of Oregon City. So about one population as visitors buying tickets, I mean, maybe it's people who live here, but that's the flow that goes through the city, the streets, the restaurants, the hotels, the facilities. That is a significant fact going forward to recommendations to size and scale what it would take for heritage operations to be self-funding. Okay, so one city volume is their current operation. And then at full capacity, which is seven days a week in the summer and five days a week for the eight months, like basically the school year, if the theater is full at, you know, 90%, I use 90% capacity as full, and they're operating at three shows a day, and working that through, they can, they can, they could handle 90,000 people a year, or three times the city population flowing through the community. It was full basically year-round. So looking at that question, then, if it's full year-round, and I, of course, just, the mid-range is just the middle, is it positive then, was the question I was probing for? And the answer is no. 90,000 people a year is not enough to be self-funding on earned income operations from ticket sales. It's because it's a facility and personnel, is, facility costs and personnel dominate the three buildings. It's a primarily a fixed cost basis. I wasn't able within the range and call of this, of this project, I didn't do a detailed fixed versus variable cost analysis, so I used as an estimate that about a third is variable, two-thirds is fixed. So if you were completely full and you had another $300,000 of ticket income coming in, about $200,000 of that would flow through. So the ranges, so that's just the setup, again, just to get sizing ranges, to approximations, was the method that I used for the projections. So in those scenarios, from ticket sales expanding, that you could go to a negative 150,000 if it was full, and then in the middle, as approximate ranges, to help, help all of us test what are the possibilities. The Tom Water Room is not operating at capacity currently, and so I did a range of scenarios with, again, working with, you know, if it was busy, 50 weekends of the year would be full, and then something in the middle. There is an opportunity for positive net income from a higher level of operations in the Tom, in the Tom Water Room. There, I also looked at the opportunities for additional contributed income. As you'll see, if you, in the detail of the financial assessment section, the CHP has had extraordinary success in raising grant funding from foundations, but has come really kind of to the end of the cycle and has, you know, foundations typically don't fund you in perpetuity, and that and the fact that currently the focus of many foundations is on critical human services, it's not, it's reasonable to expect that there will be quite some time before CHP receives funding from foundations again. So in these scenarios, it's assumed that there is no near-term funding from foundations. Government funding is being left for the strategic discussion at the conclusion of the report, the levels of funding. So what I focused on here is what might be a range of opportunity for contributions from individuals. The current level of contribution that I'm assuming you could continue receiving based on your current fundraising expenses is about $85,000 a year from individuals. You'll notice that in the mid-range growth, it doesn't go up very much, and that's because in order to get to a next level, I assume that you would need to hire a development director to help the board and staff and other volunteers organize themselves for a whole other level of effectiveness. So net, you don't really come out very much ahead. It doesn't, it doesn't pay off until you raise a lot more money, which is a whole other level. So again, you put in the fundraising infrastructure, in other words, increase your fixed cost base, and then over time, grow it so that you can get to a higher level. And that's what you see in the full capacity scenario where there's a significant jump in the, in the net funding up to, you know, estimated $180,000 would be, there starts to be payback at the higher level for that investment in a development director.
May I ask why you use the, at the SAD School, the.
We have your mic.
Yeah. Why, why was it, for the, oh, you're talking about additional Tom Water net income.
Right.
So we already have some, but that, this is the additional.
The increment, yeah, the current, the current level of funding is in the baseline.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Neely. The other point that's noted is that CHP, by the nature of its design, is a complex organization of different kinds of facilities, different staff structures, volunteer structures, and as it is, in order to grow with adequate management direction and oversight, in the mid-range and growth and full capacities, it would be AKT's recommendation that you add to the management structure in order to fund a larger, more complex organization. And I, so that's what you see in the mid-range and full capacity, is the need to invest in the management infrastructure. The big, the big element for, and please remember, this is annual funding needs. That is the, the cost of maintaining high-quality exhibits in heritage institutions. So I'd like to spend a moment on that because those are, that's the big number in the annual funding. The exhibit, so if you look at the full capacity scenario of $1,950,000 for annual, and remember, that's annual, what that would do is refresh the exhibits in all, in two of the buildings, End of the Oregon Trail's Interpretive Center and Museum of Oregon Territories, would refresh everything every year. And if you think about what would be interesting to go to, and when is the next show at the Art Museum or the Oregon Historical Society, that, that's what it would mean, is that you're refreshing all the exhibits. So it's costly to do that. The estimated average square foot that I receive from this, Clackamas, the CHP Executive Director is $200 per square foot, so used as a rough average for the square footage and the Montina Theory and the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. But then the other piece that's significant is that the theater presentation, which is a large component of the End of the Oregon Trail Center, was, was $500,000 to develop the one that they're showing now. So estimates, again, from the Executive Director to refresh it now, would be $750,000 to put together someone, something of similar quality. So that's how we end up at, you know, call it $2 million for annual exhibit refresh. So if you were at full capacity, you think about what would draw 90,000 people, three times the population of Oregon City, to come every year, every year, every year, to the heritage, these heritage buildings, it would be a refresh of all those, and that's $2 million. If you back off from that and say, well, maybe we can't do that if it's not full all the time, I just scaled it back and said, well, do half, do it some every other year, split it in half. That's the middle-range scenario. And then at status quo, the important thing to hear is that even now, there should be, if you rotated on kind of over a four-year schedule, that would still be half a million dollars a year for exhibit refresh in order for things to stay vital and active.
Do you know, I, I think it precedes your yearly analysis, but do you, and it's probably something that staff could answer, but when the exhibit was renewed, was there a jump in the number of ticket sale?
That was prior to 2006, so I'd like to direct that question to.
Yeah, that's what I said.
In 2003, when Bound for Oregon opened, there was a bump in attendance, but not as significantly as you might think. I think because it's only a component of the experience, you know, it's not like retooling the whole thing.
Okay.
Didn't you, I think, you just refreshed two years ago.
We.
And so did you have a bump in attendance?
We have, we have done internally developed small-scale exhibits, and no, they're not, they're not scaled to the level. And I guess the other thing before I move away from the subject, I guess, we also didn't have a big marketing splash to support that, and I, I think if you look at, how many times in the A and E do you see the ad for the latest exhibit at the Portland Art Museum or OMSI or wherever? If you don't have those repetitions, people don't know that you have a new exhibit, no matter how good it is.
Thank you. Is that plenty? So that was an excellent segue to page, the top of page two, which is the need for additional marketing investment. And I'd like to call your attention to page 21 in the report in the section marked Heritage Community Collaboration. The marketing assessment has two components. First is just that the current budget for CHP that they've been operating with through the, this period, it has been approximately $25,000 a year, and that purchases a brochure, a rack card, and some small advertising. So not very much media presence for the three institutions that is managed. So even in the status quo, it's our recommendation that there would be at least a, another 20, doubling that amount to a $50,000 marketing budget. The Executive Director's estimate of what it would take to regularly, annually have a real marketing campaign, marketing presence across media would be approximately $100,000 a year. So that's the estimate that I use for the full capacity, and you'll notice that I didn't just pick the middle for the mid-range growth because you're either present in a media or you're not, and so you have to, there's a step function that you need to make in order to have media presence across different, across different mechanisms. The other part that I would like to point out regarding marketing begins on page 22 of the report, and this is the city marketing environment, and I'd like to call this to the attention here because separate from CHP's marketing budget, something that could be done to make it easier to market effectively with a budget would be to examine the city's marketing environment, which is characterized by a high degree of autonomy. There's the.
That's a polite way to say that. Thank you.
So in looking across different ways that the heritage institutions of the city are advertised, communicated, you can see here that they're advertised, communicated in a variety of ways, and it's not just that it's different, it's conflicting, and it's, it's actually pretty hard to figure out, even when you're a consultant whose job is to come in and figure out. So it's something to think about, how hard does the average visitor work to figure it out? So my, the recommendation that we make on this is that the city address this because I believe that the scale and scope of this issue is beyond what a single organization can do. And the reason I call that out is because I know that part of the vision for CHP and collaboration with the heritage organizations was, was that they would be kind of self-managing on this kind of coordination and collaboration, but as I looked across the scale of the different communications coming from the county or the chamber, this is, this is bigger than any one organization could, can advocate for within the community, and I think that it would take a city-level presence in order to coordinate around the strategic vision of how you want your city marketed. It comes to the level, how do you want your city marketed and connecting it to your strategic vision. So those are the two conclusions on the marketing for the city. Coming back to the executive summary and page on page two, the net, again, this is the annual net funding amount that's not covered by operations is the current status quo. Remember, if the exhibits were being refreshed, that's the big one, is 790,000. The mid-range growth is 1,245,000 estimate, and at full capacity, it's $1,995,000. So a very significant funding gap that needs to be found in order for these three institutions to be, to function on a going-forward basis with, you know, good help. That, that can, there's, as Larry's pointing out, there's one more remark about annual cash flow, but it, I'll come back to that in a moment. Is there any questions before I go on to capital investment?
This one is almost trivial, but I noticed here you've included the Irma Tinger House and the Stevens Crawford Crawford House, and of course, it's not under the, it's not under Clackamas Heritage Partners. Is there a specific reason for doing that?
Yes, there is. Thank you, Commissioner Neely. The Stevenson, CHP commissioned an assessment of the Stevens Crawford House, which provided a maintenance upgrade investment that was needed, and it was called out in that report that it would be, makes sense to be advantageous to do the landscaping upgrade in partnership with Irma Tinger House. And then the city has commissioned it, some, it's 2002, but still has a, an assessment of the maintenance needed, the different maintenance upgrade needed for the Irma Tinger House. And, and because the city owns that property and it's all one block, and it would make sense, and if you, as the city commissioners were looking at that investment, it's, it's a million dollars for that half of this block, those two things together, it would make sense to, to coordinate those investments, and that's why I merged it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to then to the capital investments, the other lines there, the big number is $9 million for a curatorial facility. This is something that the CHP Board and, and staff has on their long-range plan for a 30,000-square-foot facility to provide. a 30,000-square-foot facility to provide adequate curatorial storage for the extensive heritage collection that this community and, and at this, at this scale, it would be a county facility, in order to make sure that things are taken care of appropriately. As noted in the report, for the assessment of the CHP Executive Director, which I did verify with a walk-around, the current storage in these three buildings is largely not adequate to protect the artifacts and collections that are in them, which is not the fault of any one person, but it's, you know, it's structural designs such as the major storage area for the Museum of Oregon Territories has a door that's also used for other large in-and-out, and the caterers have to go through there. So it's, it's open to the exterior, and so it, there's exposure for pests and vermin and temperature and humidity as a result of the building design, to no, no fault. So those kinds of issues, because the buildings are all multipurpose, are what, you know, creates many of the issues around the need for higher-quality curatorial storage. So that would be $9 million, estimated based on the input from CHP. The End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center has three areas for maintenance capital investments. The first is, of course, the hoops that are the visible discussion point. There's a wide range of scenarios ranging from it'll cost money to take them down, and it would, and they, CHP has, does have estimates for putting the bonnets back on. And then in the middle is paint the steel that's there and take better care of it so it looks better, presents better. I used that mid-range at 138,000 for, for the hoops. It would be about $400,000 to put the bonnets on, and then there would be, of course, ongoing maintenance with that. The End of the Oregon Trail facilities was designed to be temporary facilities for the larger vision for a heritage park, which wasn't built. So the temporary nature of the buildings means that they're just, they're, they're beginning to deteriorate, they've extended their, beyond their anticipated life, and there are growing number of issues that need to be addressed at those facilities. The, the park land also has some maintenance issues that are included in that 1.8, 1,803, 838,000 estimate. The Museum of Oregon Territories, the CHP Executive Director assessed to be a structurally sound concrete building. It does, however, have the maintenance needs that are accumulating over time, and it is inherently an expensive building to repair. So it's a little bit more expensive per square foot, estimated in total for the building at $3 million. The 1 million for Stevens Crawford House and Irma-Tinger House we've discussed. So the total capital investment to bring all the facilities up to a good state of repair and provide adequate curatorial storage for the county would be 14,838,000. The point that, yes, question?
No, I'll finish your set. I was waiting.
Okay. The point that Larry prompted me to add is that once you do that, then it would be prudent to establish a deferred, a maintenance reserve. So the, so actually, the annual funding that I discussed earlier does not include a maintenance reserve. I had no basis for estimating what, how much you would need to set aside each month, each year, in order to take care of the fact that once you fix it, the next thing you have to do is repair it. So that is an additional annual funding need that should be included in your thought about what it, what it means to maintain the heritage facilities.
Matt Neely?
Yes.
So as we sit here tonight, I, I was thinking that most of these financial issues were to be addressed by the city, but I heard you say in the curatorial facility that you were thinking the county might be stepping up to the plate for that. And then I, I don't have the page in front of me of some of the facilities, of who they were owned, who owned them, and, and then the ground under them, but I thought the Museum of the Oregon Territory was also some county in there as well.
The asset owner, asset ownership, Commissioner West, is on page 19.
Okay. So I'm just wondering if that's what you meant, that they would be making that investment there on the curatorial facility?
No, I didn't, I did not mean to imply that I knew who would pay for it.
Oh.
My recommendation is that if you spend $9 million on the 30,000-square-foot facility, that you would probably be good to have that also be available for the whole county.
Well, which maybe they should be at...
Which might, which might encourage them to help fund it.
Well, maybe they should be at the table tonight.
They did participate in interviews. Thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Okay, so moving, moving on then to the, the operations assessment. Overall, CHP business operations are efficient and effective.
What page do you want?
I'm sorry, I'm back at the executive summary on page two.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that. There is, there was noted a need for strengthening the accounting oversight to be in compliance with the CHP bylaws, and perhaps some strengthening of the business analysis, which has been done intermittently by the business, by the Executive Director on a project basis. The, I'd like to call, and we've talked about the need to invest in the management structure. I'd like to call your attention to the need for CHP and the city to consider strengthening the communication flow. This is between the two organizations. The, this is on two fronts that it surfaced. First is that CHP is not in compliance with their management agreement with the city as regards the reporting requirements for quarterly reports and annual reports. And this has been acknowledged by both organizations, and neither organization could provide any evidence that they had tried to address that gap. So my recommendation would be that you look at really what's the communication flow on a formal reporting basis that's needed, and if necessary, modify the management agreement so everybody has an opportunity to be in compliance. The other place where communication could be strengthened, the opportunity, is that the, the city has, does have a position on the CHP Board, but attendance has been intermittent since CHP was created, and there's some confusion about how that actually, how the appointments are made and how that happens, which led to some recent confusion there. So it would be good to strengthen the understanding of how board members from the city are nominated, understood, and then what the attendance expectations, participation would be.
Doug?
Do you know offhand, and you may not review it, but whether the management contract was clear on that particular issue or not?
There's nothing specific stated in the, on board participation. No. Thank you, Commissioner Neely. I think that what contributed to some of the confusion is that there's assumed practice that just could be refreshed and everyone then understand what to expect from each other. So if, if the reporting flow were clear and consistent and the participation on the board were understood, or if that, in fact, you know, how many meetings can commissioners and the mayor go to? What would be, what would be appropriate in lieu of that for the participants? That, that, just clarifying that point. Moving on then to the Willamette Falls Access Project. I'm now in the middle of page two on the executive summary. Given the concerns about increasing the attendance in the three facilities and the perceived need to provide additional earned income stream and how to grow the, just to, how to provide additional funding into CHP, the Board opted to pursue supplemental funding through a significant visitor draw attraction, which they deemed to be the Willamette Falls Access. The scale of the study that they, that said that, you know, at 150,000 visitors per year, there would be additional earned income that would come into CHP. And as you can see from the, as I've outlined in the preceding analysis, there is a need for supplemental income from some source to come into the, come in to CHP in order for it to be viable on a go-forward basis. The thing that I would point out is that 150,000 people per year flowing through the city is five populations with our, you know, our back of the envelope, what's the impact? Five population flows in and out of the city annually will require city support from the standpoint of most of the visitor experience is provided by the city in roads, parking, restaurant, hotels, and connects to your economic development vision. So from that standpoint, it would be difficult, or would have been difficult, will be difficult for CHP to develop an attraction on that scale and, and keep people coming to it reliably on their own, because 150,000 visitors per year requires a partnership and a, and a consistent strategy with the city. And the other thing it requires is a lot of capital, because it will take time to build to that point, and CHP doesn't have the patient capital necessary in order to move forward through to something on that scale.
That's a good term, patient capital. I like that.
You, yeah, you have to be able to put in a lot of money and wait for the return. Yeah. So moving on then to the concluding strategic choices that I came to, I'd like to direct your attention to page 29 of the report, which has the city development scenarios. What emerged from the, from this report's analysis and conclusions was the need for the heritage community development and going-forward strategy to be implemented within the context of the city's strategic vision, because there's a strong need of collaboration, as we just discussed, say, how many visitors do you want to have your infrastructure support? The answers to those questions really do determine the choices that each of the heritage organizations would in turn make, because they need to operate within that visitor reality. So I, the first level I looked at was, I called it current state autonomy, and this maps in the, the analysis I've described to the status quo, or things kept operating at about 30,000 visitors a year. The, the city operating environment has a high degree of autonomy, flexibility, independence. There's a lot of advantages to that, you know, as characterized in this report by the marketing, the way the marketing, people choose to present themselves into the city. In order, but even in a, in the current state autonomy scenario, the, an annual subsidy of $790,000, and even if you don't do the curatorial building, roughly $6 million of capital investment is a lot to ask in a status quo or current state scenario for the city to lead on. So it, it's our assessment that if the city adopts a current state to retain the current state autonomy and operate at the current funding levels, as we have been, that it would be reasonable to conclude that the heritage organizations will find their own level of support. What can the community support, both from ticket sales and contributions, and that there would be attrition over time until the city finds equilibrium. And this is both the bane and the blessing of Oregon City. You're blessed by such a rich landscape of heritage sites with a density that's so unique that keeps compelling people to look at it and, and make something with it. But it is facility-intensive. It's intensive with archive storage, and depending on how things are presented, it can also be people-intensive, but at least the operating staff at a professional level. So it's a high fixed cost base for the city to maintain, and it needs to be, in order to be appropriately sustained over time, it needs to be tied to the city's economic development vision, because that's the primary visitor experience, as we mentioned earlier. So that's the, the current state autonomy expense option. The next level, which roughly ties to a mid-level scenario, is what I call the major coordinated initiative. And this really means that the city would come back to the spirit of the creation of Clackamas Heritage Partners for the, a coordinated and collaborative heritage institution, but based on the experience of the, of the past four years, it would be our recommendation that that would be supported by marketing leadership within the city and, and a strong message about this is how heritage is to be used as part of our economic development vision. The annual fund, it's still an annual funding subsidy that's significant at 1,245,000. And if you were really going to go after this, you'd want to make sure you didn't lose your collections, so you probably would need that curatorial facility. So the capital investment is probably 15 million. That's still, and remember, at the volume levels, the volumes of visitor, visitor levels we're talking about, it won't be self-funding. So it still is a case of the city needing to either lead, you know, fund yourself, lead, put together coalition for annual and capital investment so that you have as a civic duty and a uniquely defining element in your strategy.
If I, if I don't ask you to do so, you put down 15 million for capital investment in both scenarios. Have I read that correctly?
I did make the note in the first one that you might leave out the curatorial facilities, so that drops to six.
Yeah. I, I guess, well, my wife actually, her degree was in curation, so she thinks this is a very important thing. And I, I would guess the same issues in terms of having particularly artifacts and so forth is the same. I mean, if you want to preserve them, if you want to keep them, if they're important to you. And I presume that applies to the, to the various pictures that they have there and so forth, that that issue would be before us no matter what.
I believe, I believe it would be, Commissioner Neely, the question is, I think that in the current state autonomy, if, let's say that the heritage of the city would be preserved at a, at a smaller scale than it is now, because there would be attrition. So perhaps there wouldn't be as much to protect and it wouldn't cost you as much. I mean, that's, that's what we're both politely saying, you know, how much can you afford to save? But on a larger, if you're going to make, even, if you're going to make heritage a significant component of the city's economic development strategy, then you really do need to grapple with having a high-quality curatorial facility. The final recommendation, just based on having a range of three scenarios, I called core city commitment. This, of course, aligns to the full-capacity scenario we've looked at earlier, which, remember again, had only 90,000 visitors, or three times the city flowing through. In order, in order to, for, for CHP to be self-funding, the city would need to return to the scale of the 1990 and the 1996 master plans for the End of the Oregon Trail, which envisioned the significant heritage park, 350,000 to 400,000 visitors a year, or actually, that, that would be, that's 11 to 13 times the city population flowing through the city every year. Very significant impact to the city structure. That's, that's the scale that you would need to be at for heritage to start being self-sustaining, and that's after you got there? Because of course, as we just discussed, it's the patient capital to build to that point, but once you got there, the plan would be that you had something that would be self-operating. The closest comparisons that I could come to in my experience, since a full assessment was not this project, but it would be Leavenworth, Washington, or Ashland, Oregon, where the city is the park, the destination city, destination park. So that's not the focus of the current 2006 vision, economic vision that the city's operating to. But you're in early stages there, so I have to say that you could choose to add another design guideline to that document that says everything's going to be developed with the following six, you know, the following heritage outline. And, and that, and you shift it so that heritage is the cornerstone and the pillar instead of one item, one, one strategy, one item in, in the overall economic plan. So it would be a very significant shift to look at and say, it has to be self-funding. We need a path to get to self-funding somehow. It's very large-scale. Oregon City is the destination heritage city, would be an avenue based on those earlier studies of the size and scale that you need. So that, of course, means a very extensive and long-range committed focus on the city's strategic economic development plan. The reason I bring the report to these levels of strategic decision-making on the city is that this is the context that's needed for the heritage organizations to know what are their appropriate steward... are their appropriate stewardship choices. So, once direction is set in partnership with the city, then CHP and presumably the other heritage organizations in the city can all assess that and, you know, continue, I would say, continue to make responsible choices within the context of the overall city plan. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. I think it's this time that we need to question, make sure you understand what the report is, and then we'll get into kind of some of the next steps, possibilities, if we don't have time before that. So Doug, you want to lead off?
First of all, in the conclusions, what I'm happy to indicate is, I think, what is true for all of us, that we're motivated by the desire to preserve the city's heritage fabric as a civic duty and a unique defining element, which I think applies to all three, and that was, I think, implied in the statement that we put here. I think this report was well-done. I guess I had some questions dealing with the cost and so forth associated with Willamette Falls access, but this is, that's kind of a passing, and how it proceeds is probably something we'll look at in the future, so I'm just going to bypass all of that. But I did, I did, I did circle one thing, and that where I put a big no, and I would like to just bring it up. And I appreciate, actually, I appreciate the three things, but when you made the Leavenworth-Ashland example, and that becomes the, it becomes a focal point, it's this destination area, and I presume the destination area extends really through the whole core of the downtown area, all the way to Abernathy Green, all the way to the Falls, because that's where everything, almost everything is located. We do have the Rose Farm, but I don't know if you were talking about the destination area for the whole city or not.
No, it would probably be the lower and the middle level?
Yeah.
But not the third level?
You can correct me if I'm wrong, it's a feeling I've got more than anything else. The tourism industry, I think, for the most part, does not produce family-wage jobs. Most of the people, if you got, bring in the hotels and motels and restaurants, most of the people there are not going to be working at family-wage jobs. And I think it's one of the things that we need to take into consideration, is to guarantee we're not putting ourselves in that kind of position. I know it'd be great to build several motels in the area, because you get a lot of tax revenue from them and so forth, but that's only part of the thing that we need to look at in terms of what we want this city to be. And even though I'm probably ahead of the game in talking about where we want to go, it's, I think, the only place I circle and put a big no in the picture. And so I just wanted to make that particular comment.
Yeah, I think we do want to get into where we want to go, but if we could just make sure, clarify questions first? Yep, Dan.
A follow-up to Commissioner Neely's question there. When you were saying that this really included the lower level and the mid-level with the CHP and the mood, and I was thinking that this is kind of a comprehensive tourism plan, that we're not going to be the autonomy, and that we are looking at everything from the Rose Farm to the Irma Tinger House. So, when I look at wrapping up a tourism plan of this cost, I would think we're including everyone.
Yeah, the entire area. My response was in, you know, what's the geographic scale? It would be a significant portion of the core of the city. I didn't, I did not do a map of the location and--
But you are considering the whole.
Right, I was considering that the heritage destination would be the city experience, and you'd need to--
And all these events would be part of it, or venues, on page 22.
Presumably, presumably, you know, if you look at all the different heritage organizations that different marketing efforts chose to call out as creating a draw to the city, they would at least all need to be considered.
But, correct me if I'm incorrect here, but when you look at trying to increase that visitor participation, it goes beyond just the heritage product. It also has to do with the dining, the shopping, the recreation--
Oh, exactly.
--and other aspects of the community, so there's a lot of community building that goes along with those heritage aspects as well.
Yeah, and I think that is, for me, that was probably the biggest, second biggest challenge of the report, is the city has destination with one focus, heritage, because, I mean, I remember back in 1987, and then we'll remember, when the city was trying to do heritage things, and there was a huge pushback by the community on having heritage be the focus. And then now, circling up to the current time, many of us around the table sit in the Oregon City Tourism Council, and we have a double-pronged approach to tourism, in that we feature two things, we feature both heritage and recreation, the rich scenic aspects that we have because of the riverine. And that, to me, is, I think, a huge challenge, because we value our heritage, we talk about it all of the time, it's what we bring people here to see, in most part, but yet, I was really struck by the fact that in our mission statement for the city and our strategic plan, it is a piece of a number of things that we wish to accomplish. So, to me, that's a really significant challenge for the community, and it certainly would have to be a community decision ethic, to move in that direction more strategically than we are, because I think we're headed in the area, you know, a combination of things to make great jobs.
Just to piggyback on that comment, I think, I think you can have both. I think you can have an area, depending on how it's defined, that is by design guidelines, really focused on heritage, not excluding recreation, because a lot of that area is down by the waterfront, obviously. And that doesn't mean you don't have your industrial areas, high-wage jobs, and the Hilltop, Green Center, and the College, and all the rest. So I think, I've never thought of it as the whole community, but a portion of our community has that focus. So, I don't think that dilutes it to the point where it wouldn't be attractive for a visitor.
I'd like to throw that back in your court, because I read this differently, is that we need to make a significant, I read it as, we need a significant mind shift to that heritage overlay, and which means that we would direct time, energy, resources to that focus, which, I don't want to get into detail, but it would require design guidelines and other community restructuring, I think, if we would re-vision that way. So, comment?
Thank you. So, the point I was drawing in the core city commitment scenario was to answer the question, so what would it take to be self-funding? Because I appreciate that the annual subsidy that we're discussing, even in the current state autonomy, is a significant amount of money for the community to rally behind. So, but what would it look like to get there? And based on the earlier studies, the size and scale of what's needed, just the sheer volume you have to get to in order to fund a significant fixed cost base, that's what draws the conclusion. So then you can look at that in front of us, like, why would 400,000 people a year choose to come to Oregon City? What do you have, what does it have to be, what does it have to look like? I didn't, I didn't, I just assumed that there were good reasons that the heritage park that was recommended and approved in 1990 and 1996 was never built?
It was only money.
Yeah, well, so, well, here we are again. So, I looked at it, said, well, what if you went another way and just worked with the existing fabric, and made the existing city the heritage park? Because everything, if you did a separate theme park, you still have to do all the city infrastructure, so that it just becomes like the heritage park is one more cost. And then probably with the heritage park, if it was significant and separate, then all the other facilities still have all the existing issues. So, just work with what you have, because the density of what you had is where the opportunity, the opportunity lies. So, which is from the standpoint of really grappling with the scale. The other point is that all of the facilities, as was noted in the documentation of the initiative that created CHP, are small and in and of themselves can't operate to a scale, and even though CHP and the End of the Oregon Trail Center is the largest, it doesn't either. So, another part of looking at operating self-funding on a, I look at it from a citywide perspective, because you'll have to, it would require revenue sharing somehow, you know, that there's a lot of different things that the 400,000 people are spending money on, and that total funds the heritage, which is the draw. So, very like the CHP board was looking to the Willamette Falls access to provide operating income into them, you could say there would be a number of attractions that would be, create a pool. I have certainly not done any analysis or study on how that would be done. The concept, though, is that you have to get to a collective whole that funds the base for the city.
Larry?
And many of the issues that you're talking about on a broader scale all tie here. Talking about the lower-income side of tourism, which, there's a broader scale there than one may recognize, and you talk about the industrial side. It's a lot easier to market the city if it's a place people want to live, and particularly in Oregon, because that's one of the real selling points that we have. So all the issues about, but you also have to look at the limitations, we have to, its size of scale, you don't have a lot of industrial property here, so where do we go, particularly on that downtown Seventh Street corridor? This whole issue of urban rural reserves ties into this, because, again, depending on what you're trying to create, how many components there, there's a footprint that has to be carved out and all.
Just wanted to point out, and I'm sorry, I don't think it's a mistake, but the reason we don't have that much industrial area is because we rezoned it all.
That's right, it was strategic. It was strategic.
And the more--
Well, it was.
The more successful you are in some of those areas, the more pressure there is to rezone some of that to other types of uses as well, you'll see that.
Since time is always limited, and we use it well, let's do move into next steps. And I'm sure all of us are wrestling with how we deal with the problem of this significance of course. It seems to me that this, that, first of all, if we're going to make a commitment to heritage in our community, you know, that's probably the first step. Are we going to be committed to heritage in our community? And then secondly, maybe this is an opportunity for revisioning, and maybe it's not just the city revisioning, but it's including the county. So it becomes a regional revisiting, because we think of our facilities as impacting more than just our own, our own community. So, I don't know, I guess I think of a next steps process as being very inclusive and including many stakeholders who also need to own this report, so that it becomes understood. However, I also clearly understand that the city has to take a lead on this. I think the county, as, whether it's in this report or in other conversations, are waiting for us to make a commitment. These are our facilities, we stand to benefit most of any community from whatever happens here, and it's going to have to be a broader conversation than just the government doing that in our community. We've just returned to financial stability ourselves. So, I see that it's, I'm always up for a challenge, I see myself as a crisis manager, I'm attracted sickly to those things that don't work and like to make them work. However, this is going to take all of us really committed to whatever direction, and I can't see clearly what that direction should be, but I always have faith in great minds sitting around the table chewing on it within the parameters of something like this that gives us some baseline information. So, I'll just throw that out, and then, you know, put your ideas on the table, and we'll see kind of where we get to in the next 45 minutes. Dan?
I'd like to say, Alice, your thoughts are exactly along the same lines as mine. I think we need to not only look at Oregon City, but Clackamas County, but somebody has to be the champions to push this forward. I kind of feel like in the past, the champions has been the board and the volunteers of the heritage pieces here, and--
Well, thank goodness for that.
But, but we need more champions than that, and we need everybody to work together, and if we can do that, and not only work for it as far as our heritage goes, but as economic development. And I think that's how we can pull the county and even the state in to our vision and our progress here, is by pushing those areas of economic development and the heritage too. You know, we've got heritage here that other places don't begin to have. You talk about Leavenworth, Washington, all they had to start with was a bunch of trees.
Yeah, they built it.
But we've got things that need to be preserved and need to be shown to the public and so forth, but I think we need, as a group in Oregon City, to be the champions to move this forward and try to work together so that we build some enthusiasm throughout the whole community for what we want to do here. First, we have to agree in what we want to do, obviously.
Sorry, I have to, yes, can we remember Doug? Stay close to Michael.
That's excellent. I have just a couple of thoughts. First, I want to thank the city for doing this report. Excellent report. I don't know about the rest of you, but it's nice to hear information in a calm, logical path that has an opportunity to bring us together. That's, 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 part's up to us. I want the commission to know, and I don't want to jump ahead of next steps, but our board has looked at the recommendations, and we voted to adopt them all. I mean, we're with you. We will immediately implement those recommendations, we will immediately figure out the reporting methods, we'll immediately do those things to make a statement to you and the community that we're serious about being a partner, and we're serious about dialogue. I think that it's critical, it just, it's critical. We've got to all be on the same page, or we're not going to have a page to be on. The other thing that I want to say in that is, and you mentioned in your report, is increased dialogue, and I really believe in no surprises but understanding. No surprises, no more surprises but understanding. As hard as it might be, and as ugly as it might be, and as, you know, no more surprises. And in that vein, I'll tell you, we're struggling. It's hard to keep the doors open. You know, we're months away from having to shut again. You know, weeks, well, I mean, probably a couple of months. No surprises, I want, I want you to know that. Now, does that mean we want to walk away? No. We want to be a partner in solutions, but we don't want to be false in our hope, we want to be real, and no surprises. And there's reasons, and it's not mismanagement, it's not, there's a lot of reasons why it's struggling right now, and we can get into those, but I'd rather focus our energies on how do we, where really are we, what do we, what do we want to be as a community, where do we go? So, I just think that's, that's a baseline for us, and your report is spot-on in that regard, so.
Dan.
Well, I'm kind of going on the same topic, but once again, I agree with what Dan was saying, we've had a major crisis in which started out as sort of a witch hunt, and a blame, a finger-pointing or blame session, and here it is, I'm so thrilled to see this study, because it's a classic example of turning a problem into an opportunity. And if I, I would never, you know, once again, the issues were nothing of what we started with, and it really brings greater reflection on our whole heritage area to the table and with more partners. And I'm really thrilled that we, this is a good 25,000 we spent on this survey, and it's raised many more issues than we ever dreamed of.
Anyone else before Doug? Do I have to do it? Okay, Doug.
Well, you all know I was rather, well, most of you know that, I was pretty snarly there for a bit. I'm glad to see it too, because it's very clear that we, we had a communication breakdown, but I think it's on both sides of the, on both sides of the coin. I'm very concerned that we have not had constant representation on the part of the city, on your board. We were, I think, it has to-- We were, I think, it has to do much with timing, when people's work schedules were and so forth. We had a period of time during the foundation where there was, I think, some good, good representation. I mean, I think, you, as you know, we've got three people on the commission that are very, have been very involved in heritage issues and so forth. And I think, were we able to do our, our scheduling right? And I think maybe we need to maybe broaden the pool that we look at for the city representation. It may not necessarily come, come from the commission, but it has to be someone that reports back to us on a regular basis. Our mayor's been extremely good. I think of the three mayors I've served in, in this regard, she is better than all of them in terms of having us make-
Oh, no, great.
No, no, this is true. This is true. This is true. And, and having us on a, and having us on a commission being basis on our assignments to various committees and so forth, report back to the whole commission about what's been going on. And I think that needs to apply to however we structure the city's representation. I, I do personally feel, because of the nature, I, I can understand where there might be some concerns on the part of the, of the Clackamas Heritage Boards on somehow having a, we make a recommendation, and you kind of bullet them in, because I, I don't think necessarily all our appointments to the board have been the best ones we could have had. But the, the fact of the matter is that it seems to me if we're going to have a representative on the board, it should be our representative. But we've got a pool we can choose from, whether it be individuals on the planning commission, or people on the historic review board. We have a pool of expertise I think that we can draw from, other than just the five of us.
And I believe Nenita alluded to that, so that opened my thinking as well. Others? Next steps. Where do you see us working together? Any specifics or general?
I wanted to, I want to indicate, when this happened, the impact was greater than just the museums that closed. That first month, my understanding was we had something like four or five student tours at, at the McLaughlin House. I think all but one of them canceled because the end of the, the end of the Oregon Interpretive Center was part of that. So, the impact, the impact went, went through the whole heritage community, I do believe. You mentioned being at a, at a point of closure. I, I, I don't know where we'd be in the short term of how we might handle that particular situation, but if there were a way to decide, and you, you'll know when your, when your peak use of your facilities occurred, are there points where it simply doesn't make sense to be open in a season, and other points it makes sense to be open in the season? Maybe that's something you all can explore. And maybe you have.
We, we have looked at that, you know, and right now, it, it may be forced upon us to be closed, not, you know, in the season, but I think if you start really looking at, at how the facility should operate, I think a planned scale-back is, is reasonable. You know, my concern, and it's just, is getting, because this is a good report, and we need to stay together on it. And we do need to broaden the circle a little bit more, and have Hermittinger House at the table, and McLaughlin House at the table, and the county at the table, TDC and maybe commission, or what they would choose. I mean, that, that really needs to happen, and any other, quite frankly, group that wants to be there. That, that's, that's the only way we're going to do it, because, you know, we have to think about the things like, if we're, if we are going to close, how do we do it and not hurt the other museums, because it's leading to something else if it, if it in fact is? Because that's, you know, that's reality, you know, could be as soon as September 15th, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's real now, but we don't want that to hurt Hermittinger. And it's not that, it's not that they all go away. We're looking at options. We're looking at curation. We're looking at Stevens Crawford. But the end of the trail is where our big, our big expenses are at in terms of interpreters and, and those things. So, that's the kind of discussion that we really need because of, it, it does impact. And yet, it may be a reality for a while. So, it's, we have to stay prudent. We have to really stay prudent in what we're going to do as a community.
And I think we also have to understand, like you mentioned, the interrelationships between these, this, this particular group of museums and interpretive center, but that on the rest of the heritage, because I know-
Absolutely.
-that the other visitor facilities in our community think that they're, people believe that they're closed as well. So, they're, it's really difficult when you close. And we've had, we have the same experience with the County Center when it was closed for renovation, and it was really difficult.
We've found that bad news travels fast and good news travels slower.
Slower, yeah. And so, that would all have to be part of the, you know, revisioning, retooling, or whatever might, might happen. Rocky?
Just a few comments. I thank you for, for all of your work, because I really do think it included everybody, and it was, it was very thorough. And I, I can't say that a lot of the things in their report surprised me, and I, and I think at first, I, I didn't necess, it didn't really hit me until you went through it tonight, because I think I've read through it two and a half times. But until you actually said some of those things, I'm just sitting here kind of, it, it's hard. It's very hard to take, because we all live in a community that has so much. And, and to know that, what it's going to take to make it work is unsettling, because I, I don't want to live in a city, I don't want to live in Oregon City if it isn't focused on history. That's what Oregon City is. And I, this is just hard, because we all want it to work so well, and now we've got to look at, maybe it won't. And how are we going to do that? And I actually bought my ticket and went through the Interpretive Center today, and it was the first time I went through the Interpretive Center fully since I worked there 12 odd years ago. But going through the Interpretive Center today, I just was reminded, and I'm, I'm reminded every day about this, but, but it even, I think, to a broader scope, reminded me again how important this place is. And I, I think it really renewed a, a focus for me to, to reinvest energy in it, more so than I probably have. And I have done a lot to do this, but, but, you know, we're all, look at the amount of people in this room, and we all want the same thing. And we, we truly do. And the fact that essentially, I, I kind of feel in some ways, we're in the same place as we were in 1996.
Yeah.
And I just, well, yeah, I mean, even before that. I mean, I remember living it then, and, and, and talking about the future and the plan and, and-
How many in the room remember that?
And I, I gotta say, I'm, I'm, I wish we would have took it. I wish we would have, I wish we would have stuck with it. And, and I know that we have been in our own ways, but we lost a lot of time. And, but, you know, as I, as I say that, I do believe that in order for it to work, the city has to take the lead, and the city has to make a commitment to it. And I'm willing to do that on some, you know, I have, but I have some reservations. I mean, I, I really want this city to, to be the lead on this. But we all have to be committed to giving a little bit, and making it happen, and, and making some changes that are not going to be easy. And so, I, I think that it's, it's a, it's a, it's a prime opportunity to start again, and, and kind of in a similar way that the police department is right now too. I mean, we, we're at the level of, of renewing so many things in this community. And I'm willing to help as much as I can on this, but, but it has to come from everybody. And, and, and we have to mean it. Because, you know, this is why we're living here. This is why we're involved. You know, this community, you know, I don't want to go anywhere else, really. You know, I might at some point in my life, but, but I think if I do leave, it'll be at the point that I've given up. You know? So, let's, let's, I, I just, I'm anxious to see where we go from here. I really am. And I, I think, I don't know, that's, that's probably enough.
Larry, and then Doug, and then Jack.
Well, you might want to get comments before me. I would, I think the, the discussion, particularly given the hour, and you have another meeting this evening, what I-
Yeah, we can continue.
With a little bit of trepidation, what I may suggest to you as the next step, and because this is, you see, this is a big hill to climb. This is kind of reminiscent of some of the financial issues that the city faced. I think this really does require some type of task force that's going to take its time to look at these issues. It needs to be broad enough, and I would even recommend to you, you might want to consider a facilitated process to help you through that, because it's going to take a financial commitment. There's a lot of issues have to get on the table, a lot of analysis is going to have to be done. I think you probably can't resolve all those issues. I think you do have a couple of short-term issues that you're going to have to deal with in the immediacy, but I think you're going to have to look longer-term about how this goes, and a lot of partners are going to have to be at that table to work through this issue.
Yes, I meant to put facilitator, what I mean in my remarks as well, because I don't think that any of us have the staff capabilities to probably lead the, a process that needs, needs to happen. Yeah, you're next, right?
Well, I actually want to change what I said, just based on what he just said.
You have the right to do that.
I, I do it all the time. Well, not necessarily based on what he says, but anyway. What I was going to say was this, that it is an issue of funding, and I think maybe for the shorter term, we might want to look at how, how we use the sources of the, of the taxes that come from the, from the hotels and so forth, and order partially, for whatever degree, fund, fund the facilitator. And I know, I know it's an important source of funds for various projects, but the point is, we, we may have a lot of the entities that are represented here coming in for, for grants for that, but if, if, if we lose our base, then we all, we are going to, it's all going to end for us. And so, I think we, and we, we need to bring everybody into that particular discussion on the use of those taxes, but this is one thing that we, we might want to consider in, in terms of, of funding this effort.
It, the, yeah, the source and the expense match.
The other, the comment I have, is actually raise my hand for it, though, is something a little bit else. If, if you're going through a, a short-term closure, and we don't know how mu- much it's going to operate, when I, I mentioned when your heaviest season is, but what concerns me just a little bit there is, I know when the, when the students come in, it's not the height of the tourism season. And, you know, I know in my generation, all fourth graders experienced McLaughlin House. I mean, that was a place that we all went to, and I, I think it was the next generation. And I know many in the current generations, well, actually, that's the third generation, but anyway, and that many in the, in the, in the current generation are, are still, are still making that trip. And if there would be a way to have certain, more than the McLaughlin House open, and maybe it's a case of saying, maybe it's just a couple of days a week or something, actually try to get the schools organized so we get one group starting at one place at 10, another one at noon, and alter. However, that's coordinated, but obviously, it's going to be a case of, the current museums coordinating that with each other. I would hate to see us go down to nearly zero of the, of those fourth graders coming, I presume they're still fourth graders, coming, coming into Oregon City, because one thing that people that were raised in this neck of the woods do know something about it, even though their memory may be a little bit vague of their fourth grade experience, most of them remember at one level or another, the McLaughlin House.
Yeah.
I, I agree completely with what Larry said, as far as the collaborative effort that you're going to have to go through. And, and we see, and very likely, that could extend possibly through March or so. I mean, it, and that would be a pretty intensive time. Right now, our cash balance allows us to operate through about September 15th without infusion of, of more, of more funds. We are getting toward the end of our, of our season. We always look to the, the spring and the, and the summer as, as the time to carry us through the rest of the year, and now we don't have that, that carryover. So, you know, we are a, a member of the cultural affairs department of, of the county. We have a relationship with the county. The county is trying to sort these things out too. The county does have to be a part of this discussion, a substantial part of the discussion. What we're going to need from the city, and hopefully from the county, through this several months, that there'll be a dialogue and, and discussion of this, of this really excellent report, and the, the really good discussion we've had tonight. We are going to need an infusion of, of income from both the city and the, and the county. When we, we closed on a, on a temporary basis, we, we did go to the public, and we're very fortunate getting a donation of, from a, you know, very, most of them very small donations, for the total of about $40,000. Well, you can only go to that well, you know, so often, and we don't think it's, it's realistic to anticipate that we're going to be that successful again. So, the, the level of activities that we'll be able to do during this, this sorting-out process is really going to be, in large part, dependent upon the level of, of capital support that we receive from the city and the, and the, and the county. Because we, I, I, I agree with the consultant. We are not anticipating during the short-to-midterm additional foundation support. And our corporate contributions, because of the economy, have taken a very significant reduction. So, that's, that's just a, an honest assessment of where, where we're, where we are right now.
Jim?
I just wanted to ask the representative from Clackamas Heritage Partner, have you formulated a specific number of what, what, what you need?
I think, I think it might be right here.
Well, no, no. The, the answer, Jim, is that we have models for cash flow through December 31st and expected revenues against expected expenses. And the board has directed that we make sure that we only operate with money that we have and not get to the point where there are no revenues and, and there are still expenses. That's what the September 15th date is about, because at, at that point, with known revenues, we pretty much have to shut down our, our operations, except for the model envisions keeping our curator, so that the collection and library are safe, and the visitor services program, which has a funding stream from the TDC, and at least possibly the Tom Water Room operation, although that's, that hasn't really been looked at closely. Recognizing that that, well, Stevens Crawford volunteers would, we, we would be paying the bills at Stevens Crawford so that the, the heat was paid and the alarm system was on and so on, the volunteers could continue to function, but-
the volunteers could continue to function, but during the winter, they're generally closed anyway. So the board also has been trying to think about if we were modeling that we would have those base functions and be able to continue to mothball the three facilities while whatever discussion went on. We came up with a number that, Craig, what was the revised number? Because I think-
From September through March.
Oh, sorry, yes.
From September through March, a total of approximately $75,000. We looked at $11,851 for September, $8,000 for October, $6,000 to $7,000 for November, $12,000 for December, and then January, February, and March is about $12,300. So a total of $75,000.
And essentially, essentially, that would be not open to the public, but maintaining the integrity of our facilities, our collection, and so on, and having staff enough, at least, to work through with facilitation process.
What's the thing that you mentioned?
Yeah, the curator, curator visitor services and so on.
To reach to Doug's point, would take a little more coordination, a little more talk, a little more money. But I mean, I think, because I think it's valid, Doug, but-
Okay, further comments on next steps?
Coming to my point, I mean, if the intent was to open in March and so forth, you still have the, I mean, the potential is still there to then draw the students, but perhaps a bit of an active campaign on how you might do that. And I guess I'm reflecting more than the McLaughlin House, perhaps, than the interpretive center, but the point is, there are apparently destination points that both, they have to see, really, to justify the expenditure to-
For the transportation.
For the transportation.
Indeed, that is the case for some schools. I think our hope would be that if there were a discussion under facilitation of what the new model might be through March, that in March, the organization, whatever the resulting organization collaboration was, would be in a position to make a decision about what do we open, what services can we offer, and how do we pay for them? And we wouldn't be forestalling that at the moment by assuming that it would be anything like the same model that we've been operating under so far.
Because if it's a revisioning, it could be something very different, so.
This document gives us a lot of plot.
Flexibility, it does. And we're probably close to our time. If there's anyone that wants to add to the special, please feel free to do so. However, then I assume that our next steps will be, discuss this at a work session. There's a number of items here that we've brought up. Probably be good to have a-
I think we need to submit to you a just, a real, a written formal statement as to what we went through with Craig, so you have all those facts and have everything. It's the effort, again, no surprise, and let's get it out there. So we can deal with it. We need to do that, and we will right away.
Yes, and we may need to have some conversations about what a committee might look like and what facilitation might cost. And there's, there'll be some time, some money and energy that needs to be applied to that. And as Rocky said, you know, it's not, it's not easy. It's not easy, I've done that a few times. It's not easy when you retool or revision something or try to fund something that's underfunded. It's really, really difficult. And, you know, I just come back to your words, that our rich, our rich landscape of heritage sites here is both a bane and a blessing. And we need to be positive that our community is behind us on wanting to make sure-
Right.
... that those survive into the future and in what, in what form. So I think this is a good time to invite community participation in that, if not to seek it. So any other comments on this one? Thank you, Nanita and Jack, very much.
Thank you, Kim, so much.
Thank you all for participating, and we'll meet again, I'm sure. We are adjourned.